All right, good evening. We had two items that we didn't complete from our last work session. If it's okay with the board, I'd go ahead and take the preliminary plats, et cetera, draft text amendments for consideration, just kind of run through what staff did. Then I'll turn over to Tom for the penalties piece. What staff did, we, in response to the recent General Assembly legislation, we wanted the main impetus of this was creating, making preliminary plats optional for fifty lots or less is the developer's choice. And what staff did was just really want to bring our subdivision ordinance into compliance with state law. And along the way, what we wanted, we are trying to clear up some of the mistakes, just minis- scrivenes errors, so to speak, in parts of the ordinance in Chapter 54. And we also want to insert some definitions that we run across that are not included in the subdivision ordinance this time, those are on page one of seven. I would prefer we have the same terms when we can have the same terms with the zoning ordinance, so there's some consistency in the language we use. I can start with page one, or just work my way through, or all seven pages, or if y'all saw anything that you had questions about, I'd be happy to proceed in any way you'd like.
So you were saying the non requirement for preliminary plats is at fifteen lot?
Fifty, fifty lots, yes sir, the General Assembly passed that, said that it's optional less than fifty lots, fifty lots or less, I believe.
Okay.
And what we did on page...
Somewhere in there it talks about fifty, that was my question, but... Yeah, page five of seven at the bottom.
Yes, sir, fifty-four dash sixty-one preliminary plat required. And the wording is just, you know, to get us started with the conversation, basically we're inserting containing more than fifty lots or so desired by the property owner, and that's basically if the property owner really wants to spend all that money and submit a preliminary plat for less than fifty lots, and...
Yeah.
I was under the impression these were all sort of basically just not, just changing our ordinances to bring them into the new state law, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, for the most part, and there's some additional changes that staff wanted to put in there, more housekeeping items as well, including the definitions on the first page. And then fifty-four dash twenty-seven, Mr. Lashley had already provided that, and I just, you know, we might not just remove it from the ordinance.
Okay, so the fifty-four dash five, the definitions, amongst all the definitions that are in the ordinance, these are the ones that you changed?
These are the ones we're requesting to add to the subdivision ordinance.
Oh, to add or to change them?
To add.
To add them, okay.
Yes, sir.
Are these terms used in subdivision ordinance?
They do come up, they have come up.
And they're also used in the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
No, they're in the zoning, that's why...
And I just, you know, I like to be consistent with the definitions, I don't want to...
So you're not changing definitions in the subdivision ordinance?
Yes, sir.
It's just you have terms in the subdivision ordinance that are similar, that are the identical terms in the zoning ordinance, and you want to add these definitions.
Right, and it's, I don't like that inconsistency between those two rather, in a sense, are codependent ordinances, yet they're independent.
Okay. And you mentioned fifty-four twenty-seven, you're just basically deleting that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lashley did that, I believe that was October twenty...
Well, actually, it's certain court judge.
Yeah, thank you, he just did the scrivening, he just did the striking, the courts did the actual removal. One note, there's a couple of things I do want to direct your attention to. One is on page six of seven, fifty-four dash nine-five, subsection A, pre-submission conference.
I'm sorry, where did you say?
Page six of seven.
Okay.
Section fifty-four dash nine-five. Staff felt that it is important for us to work with the applicant at the very beginning of the subdivision process, just to let them know what's expected, what our regulations require, and it's always good to sit down face to face and just communicate, saying, you know, here's what the regulations are, and here's what you need to do, here's the, you know, anticipated timeline to see this through, and what they, yeah, that's basically it. I think it provides greater communication and provides greater transparency.
Does that, has that become a requirement?
No, sir, that's something that staff just feels is for the sake of just being more friendly.
It says that shall confer with the...
But I think he's asking, does this become a requirement?
Oh, definitely, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, yes, it does, yes, it does. And I, I, all the years I've been planning this...
And what's the advantage to the developer to do this?
So they don't, so they go, they don't begin the process and then have a hiccup down the road, oh, well, no one told me, you know, I might have to do this, we can...
But I mean, if, I mean, if he decides to submit a plat and then, and it's bad and he's got to be recycled, send it back to him, and that, you're talking about recycling this every time he submits it, not having known what he's doing, if he's got mistakes in it, you send it back and the timeline starts again.
What, the way we envision, that's a very good point, the way we envision is when they initially come in, the first time, is say, hey, here's what you have to do, here are the steps you need to follow, so perhaps if I inserted the initial...
Well, the only thing is, I think it's a good thing for him to do, I think it's smart, but I'm not sure requiring it becomes, you know, it's another requirement, it's recommended that you come in because...
At least we're putting it out there, Doc.
Well, that's right, I mean, and if he says, oh, I know what to do, I'm just going to go ahead and follow the ordinances, and he submits his stuff, and there's mistakes, then his plat doesn't get approved, he gets sent back for corrections, and you go through that cycle. Now, that's a problem for him, and it's also a problem for you, because that's more effort on the part of the staff.
Okay.
But I, I'm not sure I want to just add new requirements.
That's one of the things people complain about, is we got too damn many requirements.
Well, I mean, I think that we stick in there and say it's recommended that you seek this, or something to that effect, and I don't know whether you can do that in an ordinance, yeah. I mean, but if he doesn't, if he doesn't do it, that's fine, he's taken the chance that his submission process is going to take a lot longer.
How about if I say should, instead of shall?
Whatever word doesn't make him require it.
Glad or happy, whatever, you can...
Well, I think, I think the only, the only reason it would be, actually be in the ordinance itself would be if it's a shall.
Well, the other reason would be to let the developer know it's available.
Yeah.
Well, you don't normally put, is that, is that normally put in a subdivision ordinance?
Well, I think if you take the requirement element out of it, then they can put it on an application form just as easily, if you don't require it.
Right, I mean, that's sort of, yeah.
Mr. Johnson, in my previous job, where it was requirement or subdivision ordinance, and that's just where I'm drawing from.
Yeah.
It's just good because it, I know, I understand how the community feels about adding more requirements, but to me, this is a requirement that's to the benefit of the applicant.
Help me understand what you're saying, in the pre-submission conference, it talks about for a major subdivision or re-subdivision containing fifty or fewer lots. Below that in B, it says a major subdivision containing fifty or fewer lots, and then three lines down, it says a major subdivision and re-divisions containing fifty or more lots. What is a, what is a major subdivision?
Major subdivision is any subdivision eight lots or greater, and this is the final plat, because now what, if applicants choose to not submit a preliminary plat with less than, with fifty lots or less, all they need to do is just file a final plat, that's why we're saying, look, you know, when you bring this stuff in, this is what you're going to have to provide, this information, typically you'd have to go through the planning commission.
The major subdivision is really a, with the county, the county has said the major subdivision is eight or more lots.
Yes, sir.
Whereas this fifty is coming from the state.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there, we're going to have some that are, we're going to have major subdivisions that are in one niche, and then we're going to have major subdivisions of fifty or more that are in another niche.
Yes, sir.
Or more than fifty, whichever, yeah, okay. It does make it kind of confusing, but, yeah. The state basically has changed the rules, so...
And they didn't give us any guidance on...
But I'm just wondering if our language is clear enough to, we've done the best job we can to avoid that confusion, I mean, it's...
It's my friendship for the regular words.
Are we being scanned or what's happening?
Sounds like a Geiger counter.
I'm putting my phone away.
Never heard that before.
Is it the, is the microphone?
I can do it this way.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, where's the other, who's got another microphone?
Yeah. That was, that was great. All right, what, what other items in here are not state required, but...
Okay, page seven, fifty-four dash one four seven, access from state primary or secondary highways. Currently, the language reads lots within a subdivision served by an internal subdivision street, or streets shall have entrances onto the subdivision streets and shall not have entrances onto a state primary or secondary highway, except as provided for in section five four one six oh. Now, that strike on the last paragraph, on the last sentence, I struck that because there is no five four dash one six oh.
Okay.
Okay, and I also inserted this language consisting of eight or more lots, because I don't believe that somebody creates a two or three lot subdivision, that they have to create an internal street if they're right next to...
Yeah, okay.
To me, it's just, we're putting way too much burden on the property owner, and it's reducing them having to create an internal street when their property might be right on the road, they have an access going, you know, between two properties or lots that they're going to create. I'm not going to force them to go on that easement when they're right on the road and there's adequate visibility, you know, it's overkill. To me, that's too much regulation. And that's really, that was it, Mr. Johnson, for that one. And this is, the planning commission didn't have any, I don't recall any issues mentioned by them on this.
The only thing I'd say on this one for the review?
Yes, sir.
From where you go to the fifty or fewer lots, if you took the fifty or more lots and made it C, or some other designation where it's a separate paragraph, then it's, instead of it all being together...
It emphasizes that you moved on to a new subject, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that would help, I agree.
Okay, so take E and just maybe put it where C is now, and just kind of keep them as they originally were, maybe, and just create it, just put it somewhere else within that section.
Well, just breaking that paragraph up into two.
Yeah, paragraph B.
Even if you did nothing more than end it the one sentence.
Understood.
And for the next one, it says for all major subdivisions with more lots, if you just went after agent and hit the enter button and put it down on another line...
Okay, no, I was looking at the wrong section, I understand completely.
But it does get a little confusing when you're going fifty or fewer and fifty or more, and if it's confusing to us, then probably going to be confusing to other people.
Understood.
Yeah.
Change noted.
So, is...
Which would be the better way to stick that pre-submission conference, either say it's recommended, or we stick it in, we stick it on the forms?
I would rather see it on, you know, I'd rather see it, when somebody comes in, makes their first contact, the staff, that's one of the things the staff gives them is, we recommend you do this.
Can I have a tip?
As opposed to, as an ordinance forcing, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so we'll start that.
I have a problem if you stuck it in here, parentheses, and just recommendation, that you have a...
Well, ordinance is supposed to be requirements, I think, and I'd rather not get into other things, maybe we have other places where we've done that, but...
And, you know...
Well, you can, I mean, you can make it a requirement, you can change it so that the staff shall make themselves available for a meeting if desired.
Okay, I like that.
There you go.
I like that.
So you change it to that.
So the requirement is on the staff.
Yep, that's, that's fine.
The staff shall make themselves available. We really have no choice, but I like where y'all are going with that.
There's not a shade of gray.
Gotcha, shall, shall, shall.
All right.
Okay, was there any other comments or questions for this particular amendment?
I don't have any.
I'm good.
I'm fine.
I worry a little bit about the definitions, but, I mean, some of them came from the, where you're adjusting the language to be consistent with the zoning ordinance, I'm fine. Some of these others, I worry about where in the world are we using them, like the one, the one that gets me is reserve strip.
Oh, the spite strips?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't have any particular problem with it, it just, it's one of those that's hanging out there.
Is that what you, that's, you use that term in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance?
We, a lot of these terms are just, we do use that in the subdivision ordinance.
And we use it in the zoning ordinance as well?
No, I haven't seen that one, that one's not in the zoning ordinance at this time.
Okay.
We really don't want to, we mentioned it in the subdivision ordinance, but we never defined it, and for me, you know, you have to link some of the terms we use.
That's fine.
The linkage, I'm fine with that, but that's one, it sounds like we either should, you know, get an easement or right of way or whatever, or not, you know.
We don't...
I mean, is a reserve strip something that's an enforceable commodity?
Well, you can...
Well, I, I mean, I...
Doesn't have any meaning, I guess.
I know of a case where, you know, three houses were built, and there was a, there was, space was left between two of the houses, so that there was a, in addition to the, to the regular setbacks, there was a fifty foot strip there, in case there was ever a need to put a road back there.
That doesn't, that isn't the same as an easement?
Well, should it be an easement?
Right, did they just leave the space in case they needed it, or was it deemed it?
Well, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't say I was an expert on it, I said I know the case.
Sometimes they're, sometimes they're used as spite strips as well, well, it's the term spite strips, it might be five feet wide or something like that, and there's a very large subdivision on the far eastern end of the county that has a strip going all the way around the eastern boundary of it.
What is the difference between a reserve strip and an easement?
Reserve strip, I think, is just identifying that this is going to be for future widening, and easement's actually a recorded device, it says instrument that's...
Isn't a reserve strip owned by the association and not part of one's property? If the gated subdivision you're talking about, that's what they have, the, the community owns that entire exterior, and that's how they, where they put their fence and everything else, it's not owned by the property owners, it's actually owned by the association.
How about if, let me look at some other definitions for it and just come back with that one.
Well, one of the, one of the things this is used for is, for example, if the county has a potential road widening project, and so the developer says, well, I will dedicate these extra ten feet if you widen the road, I'm not going to give you an easement now, I'm not going to dedicate it now because you may never get around to widening the road, but there's an, there's an agreement in place and recorded that says if, if the county widens the road, then...
And that would be a reserve strip as opposed to an easement.
Well, that falls, I mean, I've never heard called a reserve strip, but that definition, that's one, the definition that he has there for reserve strip, that's one of the things you would use it for, is where you're, you're not actually taking the dedication, but there's an agreement to dedicate if the widening project does occur.
So how would you differentiate between what is around lake versus this thing?
Well, I think that's, I forgot the...
I'm not even sure that's a define, I mean, that strip around the lake is basically described in the covenants of the, of the, of the lake, and that's, that's where that comes across, and I'm not sure that ever fits with anything in terms of subdividing.
It, but, well, and here's one of the things though, Mr. Fram, is that when you have, you know, a very small, clearly undeveloped, it's not even wide enough for a, an easement or access, point of access, for instance, you have a rezonance along Route 20, and you have the property owners, then you have that strip of land that's under separate ownership, then you have a property owner in Lake of the Woods, that strip of land might get notified, but not the person who owns the house, that's why it's called a spite strip in some cases.
Well, the thing that concerns me a little bit is that, according to this definition, it's specifically for future street extension or widening.
Well, I guess it gets back to, to Tom's thing, somebody...
Well, it sounds like an easement.
Well, it isn't necessarily.
Here's, here's an easement.
I guess, I guess you've got a reserve, if you've agreed to a reserve strip, it isn't a lot of difference than already agreeing to an easement, because until they build the road, you're using the land.
Mr. Fram, I've got the definition for easement in the subdivision ordinance, it's an easement means illegal authorization as shown in a legal instrument or on a plat by a property owner to a person, partnership, corporation, the general public or government agency, to use a designated part of his property for specific purposes, so I don't know if that compounds Mr. White's, I think it does.
I don't think it helps.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, is it a, is it a, is it a term that we either use or going to use, or does it have any meaning? I mean, apparently it's not recorded.
It does if you're holding that as a reserve, and they come in to ask for a building permit to build something that goes in that reserve strip.
It would seem to me that if you had it, it'd have to be recorded somewhere as a reserve strip, whether it's an easement or not, it'd still have to be recorded, otherwise...
It could certainly be a, a condition of a, of a special use permit, or it could be a proffered in a rezoning.
Or, or even involved with somebody subdividing his lots, and they said, well, I may sometime in the future want to subdivide some lots back off the road, and I need to, I need to preserve something so I have access to it.
Like you said, it's going to have, it has to be recorded.
And it'd be recorded, the notation on the plat, because I can, I can remember one case that I inherited when I came here, did not have open space on the lot when it was recorded, so therefore it became a buildable lot, so this is down there, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep, remember that one well.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe we don't want to mess around with reserves, with reserve strips, if we're going to have an issue like that, it ought to be an easement, so it is recorded.
Well, we actually have reserve strips referenced in our subdivision ordinance.
Right, that's why...
Fifty-four dash one sixty-five says, except as provided in section five four one six eight, the creation of reserve strips shall not be permitted adjacent to a proposed street in such a manner as to deny access from adjacent property to the street.
Spite strip.
So that's what you were talking about.
Yes, sir. Sorry, he just, he's a little...
That is different than the definition, it says we use four. I have a great intention of expansion.
Let me come back with something on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry I asked the question.
No, that's better, it's better than, than trying to explain it after we've already passed it, and we run into some sort of a conflict.
How about if I just come back with that, with that one definition? Mr. White, is that okay? I'll just come back, I'll rework that definition with Mr. Lashley.
Sure.
I mean, I, I mean, if y'all are okay with everything else, if I understood correctly, y'all are...
Yeah, everything else was good.
With the notice change, okay, thank you.
Well, now, if they're, if they're good with everything, then really what happens is they'll go to the planning commission, we can work out that kink there.
Okay.
This was more to get your philosophical take on this, and it's got to go through planning anyway.
Which is the work session.
So we don't need to bring it back to you guys just on reserve strip.
No, 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 well, it'll come to us when it goes through the public hearing process.
Well, that's true.
Saving one more recycle, huh?
Which I would just footnote, this is why the work session is important.
All right.
All right, the next, the next item, we discussed it previously as well, is the, currently under our zoning ordinance, any zoning violation, under state law, you have two ways to deal with zoning violations, and under our current ordinance, any zoning violation is technically a misdemeanor, technically a crime. And the way we normally deal with zoning violations is Mr. Zodi sends a violation notice, and they don't comply, I come to you guys, I get permission to file a lawsuit, and we have to go to circuit court, get a court date, and an injunction, and then there's a criminal misdemeanor attached to it. So state law allows us as an alternative zoning enforcement tool, that we have the ability to issue civil penalties, a civil summons, basically a traffic ticket, and so we had previously talked to you about that, and what you have in front of you is, is a proposed bifurcated penalty section. What we did is we, if you look on page, what's labeled page one of six...
That is...
Section seventy eight thirty-seven.
I think it's on the microphone there.
If you look on page one of six, first thing we did is we, we specifically codified we were on complaint basis, if you look at paragraph subsection B there on page one of six, we actually say whenever a violation of this chapter occurs or alleged to occur, any person may file a complaint, so that, we want to make it clear we're not the zoning police, and we're not going to go out there and hunt for a zoning violation we can find, so we codified that we operate on a complaint basis.
There's one issue with that. What happens is, when we get a complaint in, and if it doesn't fit a particular pigeon hole, planning director comes before us and wants to make another ordinance. We are going to end up with a stack of ordinances like this that are complaint-driven ordinances, is my concern.
Well, that's a different issue. This, this is, this would be a complaint, I mean, if somebody comes in and says, I want to complain because my neighbor's house is a, is a hideous fluorescent orange, Greg is going to say, there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that deals with hideous fluorescent orange, there's nothing we can do.
Is he going to say that, or is he going to say that to them, and then come to us and say, I want to put out a new ordinance that you cannot have hideous fluorescent orange houses?
Well, as far as the violations in this, there is no violation because there is no ordinance, his job, remember the next section, it says investigation of the violation and verify that it is a violation of existing ordinance? So this, the whole violation section is, complaint comes in, we verify that it's a violation of an existing ordinance, that's the, under subsection C there, and if we verify that it's a violation of existing ordinance, then they get a written notice from us. So if it's not in the existing ordinance, this section never comes in.
And if that fluorescent orange guy doesn't like that, he can go to him, and, and either Greg can come to us and say, we need a, a ordinance on fluorescent orange, or the constituent is going to come to whichever one of us that says we want a fluorescent orange.
And if a constituent complained to me, what I would say is, we have a public comment period, you can either call your supervisor or come to a public comment period and point out this thing that you don't like.
Let me touch on that, because I think that's an important kind of staff, elected body dynamic. In those situations where our ordinances or regulations or our processes don't line up with what a taxpayer or citizen thinks is fair, whether against a neighbor or a friend or a family member or themselves, then usually...
Or soliciting.
Or solicit, that's constitution. Usually, in most circumstances, the response that I would give, and certainly those that I work with would like them to do, is, that's a matter of policy that is best taken up with your elected official, that you guide them in things, and so if you hear citizens, and if we have the presence of mind and the ability to give you the heads up, we got this call, and this person's probably going to reach out to you, then that's certainly our duty to do that, but that's really how that process should, should work, we shouldn't be responsive, I guess, and I don't want to say in most ca, in most cases, we wouldn't initiate that kind of change, that would be something that you all would initiate based on constituency.
My practice as zoning administrators to tell them, basically what Brian just said is, talk to your, you know, there's nothing covered here, talk to your district representative, and let them, if they want to proceed with it, do that, because I can't do anything at that point.
And I've been sitting here two years, and I think, I cannot remember a single amendment that... And I've been sitting here two years, and I think, I cannot remember a single amendment that Greg brought that wasn't an expansion of rights, where we'll see that something's not allowed, and he'll bring it back to you and say, well, you know, we have this, I like the sign ordinance, we had this issue with digital. So, typically, if, I can't think of an instance where Greg brought anything to restrict rights, we're always bringing it to expand rights, where somebody was prohibited from doing something, and we're trying to.
We do get requests to, to impose more, uh, laws and more ordinances, and we're always getting those requests, because somebody else likes something. And we gotta make a judgment on it.
But, I, I think we need to depersonalize this, because this is not an issue of Greg. I mean, unless Greg is immortal and has signed a contract for eternity, sometime in the future, someone besides Greg will be the planning and zoning director. So, I mean, this is not, this is not what we, what we, when we talk about whether we want the planning director or the zoning director to, to have this power. It, it's not really a commentary on, on, on Greg's, um, correctness or, or, uh, ability to do that fairly. It's, do we want to empower that position, that, uh, uh, office with, with that? So, again, it's, it's not, it's nothing aimed at Greg.
Well, and, and this what's before you today, it specifically says, upon receiving a written complaint, the zoning administrator is designated, shall investigate and determine whether a violation of this ordinance exists. So, all this empowers, the administrator do is, is determine if a complaint comes in, is that complaint addressed under this ordinance? That's, that's the only thing that we're doing here.
And I seem to recall a few cases, at least, that where you, uh, set out, you know, notice a violation, that were just simply ignored.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
All the time.
And, and that's not good either.
And that just forces us into the, into the other course of action.
Which is a full-blown litigation, which takes a year. And then they, they thumb their nose at us for a year. That was what, kind of what prompted this, if we go with the civil penalty.
Describe the, the, uh, enforcement of the civil penalty. Let's say that, that, uh, the two hundred dollars gets assessed. Does that still involve court action to, to actually force a collection?
It, it. It worked before.
Yeah.
I thought Greg was maybe the magic word.
I'm interfering.
It literally works exactly the way a traffic ticket works. You get pulled over, they either pay or go to court, and it's in general district court, and you'll just be on the docket that day.
Yeah.
And you'll tell the judge your story, and it, so it literally, with this system, looks identical to traffic court.
Except that your fines can be exponential by the time you make it to court.
No, it's actually the same. If I get pulled on fifteen, get my ticket, then go squealing down the road, get pulled four miles further down, I mean, by the time I get to court, I might have five tickets.
However, if you get pulled over for non-working lights on a trailer, you have that ticket, the next cop's not gonna give you a ticket for that.
Right, but the whole point to this is to motivate people to fix it.
And, and unless it's the next morning.
That, that's right. The next morning, they'll do it.
The cop is right.
And notice, and notice our provision, and this is a state law requirement, it's only once every ten days. So, if, if Greg issues you a ticket, he can't issue you another one until ten days later.
Right.
So, he can't give you one even that day or the next day. He's gotta wait ten days, and if you haven't fixed it in ten, then you couldn't get another ticket.
I, I just, I think that, I understand where you're coming from, and I understand how you're looking at this, but, but I agree with Jim's original comment. I, 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 I think that we're, I think this is, we're, this is a major change. This is not a small change.
No, it's a major change.
It's a major change. And, and I don't think that, uh, I, I am uncomfortable with, um, I'm uncomfortable with the change. I'm uncomfortable with making the, uh, the zoning administrator, um, basically turning him into a, him or her, the position into a, a traffic cop for zoning, uh, violations.
But he, but he is today.
He's already.
It's just that, uh.
He is to an extent. All these things are degrees. And every time, every time we, we, it's just like your objection to the, to the, to the shell, okay? I mean, in and of itself, that was not a major deal. It's not gonna, that's not gonna make the tides run the other direction. Uh, this is, this is making government a little bit bigger, and at some point down the line, we're gonna get a request for a, 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 a compliance officer. Because there are, now that the, now that the public knows that, 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 that there's this process, you're going to, I, I bet you will triple the number of complaints you get in the, in the first year. People now know that there's more teeth, so they're gonna go out and they're gonna be ratting out their neighbors, and, and, and Greg's not gonna be able to keep up with it. And you're gonna have to have a compliance officer.
My concern is the, the citizen who comes in and says, here's a violation, uh, and it's impacting him. And basically, the county, because of the long, drawn-out process, appears to have done nothing to, to enforce its own ordinances.
Which we have a case right now, that is the appearance of what's happening. I spoke with you about it a couple of weeks ago. It's been going on since I believe June of last year, I think, when I was going through my paperwork with the initial complaint. Greg's been working with the people to.
To improve it.
They haven't, and they're, they're moving on. So, I don't disagree with this, but I also have a concern. And, and you say that it's not, you know, a traffic ticket, you're gonna get this fine. With, with this, before, before they get a court date, they can have a very, very substantial fine. It just bothers me the, the accelerated speed that they can have. The fi- maybe five years down the road after we've had this ordinance in, in effect, we could become more aggressive with it. I, I, what you were saying before, Mark, about, you know, you're gonna get people ratting out their neighbors and everything else, just because. That, that's where my concern is with it.
Well, uh, but, but if, if somebody's violating our ordinances, do we, do we care about whether they violate them or not?
We do, but we've never, we've, we've always done it on a complaint basis. We haven't gone out looking for.
And this still does it on a complaint basis.
Yes, we, but there's gonna be a lot more complaints, I guarantee.
The actual real work increase won't be to Greg's office, it'll be to me. I'm the one that's gonna have to go to court with these things.
No, it's gonna be Greg, because Greg is gonna have to go out and investigate these, and he's, and he's gonna have to be, it, it's, it's gonna have to be a different process. He's not gonna be able to use the same process he's al- already used, because you have vastly changed with the, uh, with the ramifications on it.
The, the other thing, just for context, and understand part of the thinking here, if you've been to traffic court, the way this work, you, you may go in there with a substantial fine.
Right.
Same as the officer wrote you seventeen over, and by the time you walk out, the judge reduced it to seven.
Right, and, and I under- I, I understand that, I, it's just, i- is it, does the state code give us any other options? Is it either we do, we have what we have now, which is, we do nothing until, unless and until we take it to court directly? Or we, or this path? Is that, are those the only two options? Because it seems to me that, that at least conceptually, you know, doing something that, that causes people not to just simply ignore us might have some merit. But maybe, maybe going to the extent of, of the meter continuing to run is a little, is a step a little bit too far for us. And so, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what.
Well, we can reduce the penal, we're not obligated. The state allows us, for example, the two hundred dollar first offense, five hundred dollar. But that's the state's allowance. We could do fifty dollar first offense and a hundred dollar subsequent.
Structurally, this is, this is what the state.
This, what this is, is authorizing language from the state, because under, in, any enforcement, you really have two ways of doing either criminal or civil. There really are no other ways to enforce, and currently, it's all criminal. And so, what the state has said is, we'll give the locality the alternative of going civil enforcement, as opposed to making every zoning case a criminal case, which it technically is. I mean, technically, technically, you can go to jail for a zoning violation, under our current ordinance. Technically, a jo- and I've s- I've actually seen a judge send somebody to St. Sinson, not in, not in our jurisdiction, but in Hopewell, when I was a city attorney there. I actually saw a judge send somebody to jail for three days for a zoning violation.
But if, but if you're looking at a situation here, even with the current procedure, if somebody sends in a written complaint, he's gotta investigate it.
Right.
Whether, whether it's under, and, and then, so that part of the process is the same. And so, then the question comes, does he issue, uh, go through this process where he can issue a fine? Or does he go to the process where we have to go to court?
I actually like what Jim said. With the fines not being, uh, there's no reason we can't come back and revisit this and raise the fines later, right?
I just pulled the numbers out of the state code. We're not, we can use different numbers.
I would be much more comfortable with it if the fines were not where they're at, because you go out in the county, and there's people that are going to have the violations that for one legitimate reason or another, do not get the things cleaned up in a timely.
Sometimes it ten, you can't get it done in ten days.
Right, so we can still enforce it for the people that just wanna say, jump on a lake to us normally. We can still enforce it and be aggressive in that manner, but it's not as much of a, an impact on a lot of the people that are going to.
We don't look like we're, we're, we're not looking at this as a fundraising, uh,
Exactly.
as a revenue source.
Right.
And, and you don't want it to be punitive, because it will encourage some neighbors who are after their neighbors anyway. This is just another tool in their, you know, hunting expedition.
But if you've got, if you've got a complaint with your neighbor, and you, and you're sitting there violating zoning ordinances.
The people that are after their neighbors tend to complain, anyway, Greg correct me if I'm wrong, but every place I've ever been, if the neighbors are after each other, they complain whatever ordinance.
We won't mention the name. My, my, my one thing to, to counter what you said, Mark, I, I agree. There will be more complaints. Um, but my question to that is, is it more complaints because we just have the, the intake of people? Or is it that somebody finally goes, now I have a reason that I can complain, and the county will actually do something, instead of telling me, well, I'm taking it to court? And it's just, it never really gets processed.
A lot of these things, I mean, that's a good question, or a series of questions, uh, but, I mean, there's, government can't do everything. You know, Culpepper's going through a, a fight right now about a noise ordinance. Well, there's, there's legitimate, there are times when neighbors make noise just to annoy their neighbors. So, there's a legitimate reason to consider a noise ordinance, but I think there's more negatives than there are positives at the end of the day. And some things.
Given the fact we don't have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, some, they're not just have to accept that white's not, white's not gonna be perfect. But if, if, there is no way that we adopt this, that we are gonna need, it, 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 it may not be next budget cycle, but it'll be the one after that, or the one after that, we're gonna need a, a good compliance officer. And, and, and it, and it, it's gonna build from there. And the, the problem is, I think the reason there's gonna be more complaints is because people will hear, hey, they gave old man Jones down the road a ticket for, because he had garbage in his backyard. You know, so, so now we, we can get this guy here. I mean, you know. But, and, and I can tell you, in my business, I adopted some, some principles very early on, because I didn't want a reputation for certain things. If you, if you, if you open a store, and you, and you give free and easy credit, guess what? You're gonna have a lot of customers there taking that free and easy credit. And, and if we, and if we, if we make it really easy to file complaints, and, and, and we make it much more likely that people are actually gonna be dragged into court, then I think we're just gonna have a, an ever-growing caseload.
Can I share, can I comment on that? I, I worked as the city attorney for Hopewell for three years. Hopewell is a, um, stressed community. Um, twenty-two thousand people, a, a lot of substandard housing, a lot of derelict buildings, a lot of trash and debris in the yard. And we, we had one, we actually had a court day, one day a month, that was set aside for doing these, and in that environment, we averaged ten to fifteen a month. And that was in a very stressed, uh, community, and we had about ten to fifteen cases a month. And, and I, so I'd be shocked if we hadn't even near that many in a, in, in orange, but it's just for comparison purposes.
How many complaints do you get on a order, on, uh, zoning or, or violations? How many complaints do you normally get?
In a month, or?
Yeah, in a month.
Two, three, and four.
A whole lot less than I see when I drive from here back to my house. That, that's.
That's your concern.
That's my major concern. And the other thing is, how do you all calculate two hundred square feet of junk?
I calculated.
That was a rhetorical question.
Right, exactly.
I don't do cubic feet.
Well, then that's the problem with our ordinances.
Right, does it take?
So, we may have to work on that.
Right, is it spread out within a two hundred square foot area?
Two hundred square.
Or is it side by side?
Yeah, two hundred square feet is two hundred square feet.
So, you don't count the unlittered area in between? There's an engine here and a transmission over here, you don't count it.
Yes, sir.
You're trying to aggregate two hundred square feet.
Right.
And I'm trying to work with them to get as close as possible, because I know a lot of times, folks don't have the means to remove that stuff. So, for me to take it to y'all is that I'm, I'm at a point, and any reasonable zoning administrator would go to that, and would acknowledge, yeah, some people are distressed or stressed or whatnot.
But that's, that's where one of the concerns is, is the neighbor.
But there's, but there's a whole bunch of zoning violations.
Oh, my.
That, uh, my neighbor, if my neighbor has a zoning violation, and it isn't, you know, giving me a hard time, I'm not gonna complain about it. I'm trying to maintain good relations with my neighbors, as I think most people are trying to do. Yeah, you do have these guys that do this, and.
The real nub of it, quite frankly, is that right now, Greg or whoever the zoning administrator is, is, is going to limit his activities to clear, uh, major issues. If somebody goes out and they got a little trash out in their, in their yard, um, Greg's probably not gonna be out there with a ruler trying to figure out whether they have two hundred square feet or not. If we, if we go to this, I think you're gonna start seeing a lot more, I think, I think Greg's focus is gonna change, and he's gonna be looking much more at whether these are actually violations or not. And that's one reason why there's gonna be more of them. Right, right now, we, the, the way we have it set up, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a limiting, just the way it's set up kind of limits what we get, and I think if we go to this, it's, it's, it's because people are gonna be saying, my, my neighbor's got two hundred fifty or two hundred thirty-one square feet of garbage, and, and Greg's gonna have to go out there and check it out. I just, it's gonna happen.
Yeah, and then on the flip side, which we definitely need this, is one that he's working on right now, that they probably have two hundred and thirty-one square feet in a five-acre space that is not junk. I mean, literally, so that's. Yeah, it, it, and it's been, he's been very lenient with them, working with them and everything, but it continues to generate complaints, because we don't have, I, I don't have a problem with going to the court system side. I don't like the dollar values that we're at.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with putting the dollar value down. I just, I'm concerned that it looks like the county, when somebody makes a complaint, a legitimate, uh, violation, and the county doesn't do anything about it. That's, and so, you know, why do we have an ordinance if we won't enforce it?
Well, but if the county doesn't do anything about it, then, then, see, you're, you're making my argument there. Because why is changing this gonna make the county do anything about it?
Because it, because.
All we're doing is cha- all, we're not changing the rules.
No, we're not changing the rules, but the fact is that it takes a year to get to court.
But that's not the same thing as the county not doing anything.
The perception of.
The perception is that we're not doing anything, because that violation sits there, and sits there, and sits there.
I've received three calls in the past, three weeks, on this particular property, and the people have all said, nothing's been done about this. And I, I researched it and found out that, no, that's not true. We've actually gotten the information a long time ago, but due to the fact that it's, the only way to get anything cleaned up on this property, other than taking him to court, is to gently nudge him along, whereas if we do go to this.
The nudging is a little.
The nudging's a little more of a push.
Yeah, I guess.
Part of the prompt is the fact that it takes eighteen months approximately, in our circuit court, we're understaffed, we don't have judges, and getting to circuit court takes about eighteen to twenty-four months to actually get a court date, which is, which is a travesty of the general zoning. Which is, which is a travesty that General Sillini's gonna deal with, it shouldn't be that way, but it is, it is, and that was part of what prompted this, is it takes so long to get a court date in circuit court, which is how we currently.
Like I said, I, I don't have an issue with the process, I don't like.
What would the, what would you think it'd be more comfortable with the, with the?
Well, if you start off with something like a ten dollar fine.
That's, that's, that's mean.
No, no, but that, that detracts the, I'll get my neighbor ten bucks, it's not worth it.
No, no.
But the sum that's going to line is higher. And when you get a couple of months down the line, then it gets substantial.
Well, I, I think, I think another, I think another issue here is if the board decides it wants to do this, I, I think we really should go back and, and look at, at what it is that we're, that we're gonna be cracking down on.
Well, that's, I, I guess I'm having two thoughts. One is, do, do we apply this, uh, more precisely? We, we identify the areas of, or violations that, 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 you know, get this, this type of, uh, of a fine? And then do we revisit the? Can we, can we segregate it?
Sure, I mean, you could say this applies to certain types of violations.
Or, or particular ordinance categories, yeah.
If I may, look, I don't wanna say the, the, we can work complaints about junk, can we do anything else? I mean, without a question, it's junk. And we have, there's every district, I can point to a, a, a model, uh, in every, in every district. And there's, by far, there works. Honestly, it's just, you know, then we have the rush sound and control, but that's another issue. But it's, it's junk cars and just job.
Or, or buildings in disrepair, I mean, in some cases, I know, you've got buildings that are falling in and.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I can remember one case where, you know, someone, you know, actually it takes them a while, you know, sometimes people don't have the means to do that. But I mean, when you start, when you start accumulating all that stuff, you know, it does create a, an environmental and a health issue. And so that, that would be, I, I, I'm likely all involved.
Buildings in disrepair would not be zoning violation.
Yeah, that's a building.
We actually don't want anything addressed buildings in disrepair.
And that, that's even a touchy area.
And we, I mean, we don't currently have anything in place for addressing buildings in disrepair.
Well, we've got a lot of time to deal with finances, don't we?
Yeah.
I'm not. Well, I mean, I, i- i- if, if there is a next step, I, I guess I would like to see a suggestion as to what areas of the code this might apply to, in a, in a much more narrow treatment. Uh, and maybe just junk, I don't know, whatever your, your thoughts are. And, and a substantially simplified, uh, approach to, to the, the fines. I mean, that, the, the way this is written now, it, it ratchets up, but it's got a limit of five thousand and, and it may be that it, it, that needs to be just sort of simplified and a, and, and the numbers lowered. And then take a look at it and see if it's something we can.
I'll be happy to work with Mr. Lashell.
Well, to ask a question, is that something you want the planning commission to work on, or would you prefer to see it again yourselves first?
I think we need to see it.
Yeah, I'd bring, I'd bring it to us, because we might not send anything to the planning commission.
That's true.
Uh, the, the, uh, the other text changes that were on the events, uh, where, where were we on that? We talked about that at the last work session and, and, uh, Tom had sent up.
We don't know how to fix it. Mr. Zodi and I can't figure out how to fix it, we really can't. We're, I mean, we're struggling, so we thought maybe just let it sit for a little while.
Oh, okay, okay, well, that's fine.
Let it ferment while we try and figure out.
That's, that's a reasonable answer.
That's a good, good answer.
We've all been there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good. Sorry, I brought it up.
No, it's a kick.
No, it was, it was good and he gave the best possible answer. Honestly did.
Okay.
So we just hang out for five minutes, I guess?
Well, what about the?
We have another agenda.
The financial.
Are you gonna do that in four minutes?
I think so.
Less.
Yeah.
Okay, well, in that case. We're, we're working on it.
On your side, it's like, it's like Tom did.
You don't have any words of wisdom out of all your deliberations?
I mean, we've, we've had, what, three meetings now, I think, with, with Glenda and Brian and, and Jim and I. And, uh, and we're still working on it, and I think Jim and I are gonna get together and kick it around some.
And we're actually, we're, we're looking at, at data that does, tells us where we're spending money in certain areas, like the CIP categories and things. As well as, uh, how we compare to other, uh, localities in terms of, uh, how they raise money and spend money and these kind of things. And so we're trying to, sort of, make a, a more complete picture so that when we create these policies, that they're in a context that.
Right, there's a, there's a foundation there that makes, you know, will, will hold them up, basically.
So will bingo tables fit in?
You're gonna see a new item in the, in the capital improvements plan, it's a big ol'.
We're kind of playing for fundraisers there.
Well, we've just, just been debating a fundraiser and we, yeah, didn't get very far with it.
I, I would think by, what, the first meeting in, in, uh, in, uh, October, that we could maybe bring you all some, some actual, something to look at. As opposed to we're working on it, is it, Jim, do you think that, think it's doable?
Yeah, I don't think. We, we're actually beginning to reduce the size of the circles.
Yeah.
Quite, quite a bit, but we're not quite ready to report it yet.
Okay.
Trying to figure out who's making all the noise.
Mr. Payman though.
All right.
We've got a couple of minutes.
Okay, shall we adjourn this meeting?
No, you wouldn't adjourn it, you just recessed.
Recession.
Okay.
All right.
Put me in the pledge of allegiance group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to hear the children say that.
Yeah, nice.
All right. Dear Lord, may those generations whose faces we cannot yet see, whose names we may never know, say of us here that we led Orange County into a time of hope for all of her children. With the promise of a bright future, a reality for all her people. And an opportunity for each individual to achieve his or her goals in life. May God give us the wisdom to know his purpose and to strengthen us for the good work ahead. And always, always bless those gathered here and throughout our county, our state, and our nation. Amen.
Okay. There currently are no changes to the printed agenda, are there any changes that anyone has?
Move to adopt.
Okay, or. Okay. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. On the approval agenda, um, that it's, I should have done that. I would like to strike the minutes from the, the consent agenda and put them to, um.
Separate.
Yeah, separate. So with that, I look for approval of the consent agenda as modified.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero, and then we move on to the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth, all three sets.
Second. Motion is second, I will abstain from the vote because I was not here, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with one abstention. Okay, we move on to public appearances, first is the business spotlight with Marie Bowman, the manager at CJ's.
Actually, I'd love the owner. Mister Neighbors.
Greetings.
I'd like to thank you for spotlighting my business on CJ's, uh, on Bird Street. I didn't make a long speech, so I'll answer any questions that I can. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, just give us a brief outline of what you serve and your hours.
Well, we have, uh, Mike, uh, uh, Tyler, who grew up in Orange, he went to Orange High School, he's a chef for thirty-five years. He worked at the Bavarian Chef for eleven years. And we serve duck, we serve, uh, Cornish game hens, we serve all kinds of American style food. And, uh, we're trying to make it a family organization, family restaurant, where you can bring your children in and feel comfortable. We do have a bar situation, but we are very, very strict on how we run it. And, uh, no foolishness going on there. And, uh, you'd be proud to bring your children in and we're char- uh, children oriented, that's our family. But I would like to appreciate, I do appreciate you calling me in to speak about CJ's. It's only four months old and we're going through that growing stage, so.
How's it, uh, getting a lot of good, uh, response from the, uh, from your customers?
Believe it or not, it's up and down, you, you just, you know, one day you have a tremendous amount of people and next day it's a ghost town. But I guess that's all businesses in, in this day and age.
I do know that the food I've had there is very good, so, uh.
Well, thank you very much.
Service and atmosphere is very nice as well.
Well, we try, and there's days that we hit a hundred and there's days that we hit below a hundred.
You're in a tough business.
Yes, uh, very tough business.
TripAdvisor, we've got four stars already.
But what do they know, you know?
I, I've been there a couple of times and had the, uh, the specials and they were, they were really, they were creative and, and, and they were very good.
We have a really good chef, there's no doubt about it, uh, top notch. I don't know if you all like duck, we have duck every so often with a special sauce and, you know, a lot of people aren't familiar with duck, but it's very good.
It is very tasty.
I didn't want to see Marie again.
Ruben's and steak and cheese, we have awesome lunch crew, so. I know you know the, cheeseburgers are awesome, so feel free to come join us at lunch as well, we have specials at lunchtime too.
I know you're very busy, is there any other questions you'd like to ask, or?
Thank you for stopping by.
Well, thank you for inviting me, it's been a pleasure, thank you gentlemen.
To get back to my children.
See you, Marie.
How are you today?
Marie used to be an employee of mine. Okay, uh, next, the presentation of the proclamation for national farm safety and health. I should go read this and give it to someone? Okay.
I guess I give it to you.
I guess you do.
I won't read anything, it'll be a brief one. Okay. The proclamation declare the week of September twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, as National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County. By the virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, through September twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, as National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas across the nation, county and state, organizations have committed to making safety a top priority this fall through the National Farm Safety and Health Week campaign. And whereas each year since nineteen forty-four, the third week of September has been recognized as National Farm Safety and Health Week. And whereas this year's theme is safety counts, protect what matters. And each day of this year's campaign focuses on a different aspect of farm safety, from rural runway safety to children's safety and tractor safety. And whereas agriculture is more than seven times as hazardous as any other US industry, with five hundred nine fatalities in two thousand twelve, according to the census of fatal occupational injury. And whereas farmers put in many hours and accomplish difficult tasks, which include operating heavy machinery, handling livestock, and working in hazardous conditions. And whereas to keep farmers safe, training and education are critical. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this night day of September two thousand fourteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby declare the week of September twenty-first through September twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, as National Farm Safety and Health Week, and the start of the year round effort to promote safe farming. And be it further proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors urges all those who farm to make safety a priority. You're welcome.
Got a couple, just quick facts I wanted to give you, and an announcement on our program. Certainly appreciate you recognizing the importance of farm safety. Every day across this nation, two hundred and forty-three agricultural workers suffer lost time due to injuries from a farming accident. This represents the average of three to four percent of farm workers in a year will have some type of injury for lost time. And five percent of those that, that lose, um, some type of injury result in permanent effects. There are two to three deaths per ten thousand workers each year in agriculture, which is, has a leading, um, cause of death from overturning tractors. Agriculture is one of the most dangerous industries in the US. A special concern in agriculture is the number of youth that are injured on our farms. On average, sixteen thousand children are injured on farms in the US each year, with one percent of these injuries resulting in death. Our most richest recent situational analysis where we identify our programs for the next four years, citizens of this county recognize and, and farmers, uh, increased emphasis on farm safety. As a result, we actually have a planning meeting tomorrow, which is just a coincidence to this receiving this today, to plan a farm safety day that's gonna be held Saturday, November eighth, at the New Virginia Tractor, new location at, um, Hernan's there, here in Orange. This is all day event, it's a multi-county event, it's not just for Orange County. It'll be, uh, for counties around here, Alamoor, Madison, Louisa, all are participating or participating in, in planning this, um, program. It will be for both youth and adults. Thank you for recognizing the importance of farm safety and Farm Safety Week, appreciate it, thank you. Any questions?
Do we have, uh, good statistics in Orange County relative, or the state relative to national?
It's, it's typical, it's, it's not, um, adversely one way or the other. I mean, there are farm injuries, but we've, we are fortunate, um, you know, we haven't had that many deaths, um, in serious farm accidents, but, um, we, just like any other, any other place, um, there's, there's injuries, you know, each year.
Is there a system for collecting the statistics?
Yes, it is. Um, anytime there is a, a serious injury, one of the systems are we report it to our, um, Associate Director of Agriculture Programs, um, who keeps the data and, and forwards it to, yes, but they, they do keep track of all of that. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, and y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, next would be the introduction of Virginia Strong, Animal Shelter Director.
Yes, Chairman members, uh, asked Jenny to come forward, uh, oh, she's coming forward. As you all know, we went through a process of replacing Beth Hamilton, who had been the long tenured, uh, animal shelter director who, uh, left the position, uh, back in July, June, July, I think it was. And so just to kinda give you, uh, before I go into Jenny's particulars, is that we had twenty candidates for the position, there were six of those candidates. They were deemed, uh, well qualified and Jenny was the one that, uh, was offered the position out of that real competitive pool. Uh, she comes to us, uh, from the animal control as an animal control officer with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, had been there since two thousand and five. Uh, she has an associate's and arts degree in veterinary technology from Brule Ridge Community College, and has many years of experience working for veterinarians. Uh, further, she's worked for the Louisa, Louisa County Sheriff's Office as a dispatcher, and has previously volunteered with Orange County Rescue Squad, Design Crossroads, Volunteer Fire Company, and currently she volunteers with Gordonville Volunteer Fire Company. She's a graduate of Orange County High School, uh, and she started here a couple, three weeks ago, so I introduce to you Jenny.
Hello. Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck in that job.
Thank you.
Well, I got to see it for all.
You have to take care of them.
Yes. That's the fun part.
Yeah, that brings them to you instead of the way around.
How do you feel about your volunteer cadre?
Our volunteers?
Yeah.
We have a lot of wonderful volunteers. We're very, actually very fortunate, um, the Humane Society has a bunch of people that have already come talk to me, and I already knew them from doing animal patrol. And they put in a lot of hours and do a lot of, a lot for our county. They do great.
Good, very good.
Yes. Anything else?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Uh, next we have public comment. Anyone sign up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, move to board comment.
Yes. A couple of things. One, I'd just like to say that the Central Virginia Regional Jails Workforce Group does a phenomenal job. Saves taxpayers a lot of money. They, today they were out at the airport doing VDOT's job, because once again, for some reason, their tractors have been parked since last Friday, have not moved, and have not cut any grass. And the workforce cut with weed eaters, like most people cut with tractors, and did a great job. So it's well worth utilizing them and working through the county administrator's office to, to get them out and utilized in the county. And I've had numerous complaints about the fact that the grass has not been cut. And if it weren't for all of our fine citizens cutting their own grass, I know Route twenty as long as, along with many other streets would not look very good at all. So that's one of the big things. And also, a second thing, got an email regarding mainly concerns from the Lake of the Woods community that Spotsylvania County was building a secret incinerator off of Route six twenty-one. They are not. It is the Dominion Power Station, for transfer station for power lines, is what's being built down there. So if any of the citizens watching this would like to know, know it is not a secret incinerator that Spotsylvania County is building. It is actually a power switching station. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, I have something. This evening, we have several juniors and cadets from Girl Scout Troop one thousand twenty-four joining us. The troop is from Orange County, and their meetings begin this week. The first badge they will be working to earn is Inside Government Badge. So they're sitting in to watch our meeting, and we'll interview some of the board members following the meeting. The Inside Government Badge shows that the Girl Scout has learned more about how local government works, and we welcome the troop to our meeting. Glad to have you all here. And we'll be talking to them right before we go into closed session. So, we'll move on to our action item. Adoption of the two thousand sixteen budget calendar. Glenda.
In your packet, you have a draft of the FY sixteen budget calendar. It's very similar to the ones that we have followed in the past. We continue to show a lot of work sessions, although, as you know, each year the issues seem to be different when it comes to the budget. And so whatever work sessions we don't need, we can cancel them, but we wanted to go ahead and schedule them so that we would have, be able to make the public notice in advance. Are there any questions or concerns about any of these dates? This would put us adopting the budget as early as April seventh and, or as late as April fourteenth.
Chairman, there are two, two dates that are certainly present in my mind with this calendar. After talking to the Director of Finance, I will be presenting my proposed budget with Abel, Assistant to Glenda for sure, on February twenty-sixth. And then, in order to keep our advertising scheduled, setting the tax rate on March twelfth. Those are two real operative dates. Again, we have work sessions, and we have some room we can wiggle in those, but those are two prime dates.
Okay.
What, what are the? I just, we just, I guess got this, this evening, so. I see a list of dates here, and then I see various cryptic things on the calendar. What, is, are, do they go together, or?
Um, yes, the highlighted in yellow on the calendar are actual board meetings or work session dates. The days that are just outlined, or the holidays for Thanksgiving, the Christmas holiday, New Year's. So that's what they designate.
Okay, so for our, okay, so the.
We're not approving the holidays, it's just the work sessions.
The, the work sessions, so are all the, are all the yellow?
That's correct. The work sessions and, and the work set, or the regular meetings, for instance, the, the three-year forecast that will be at Lake of the Woods in the middle of November, is, is not a budget work session, but we have it highlighted as a, a part of the budget process.
What about the December, when you, you're showing it a, a regular meeting on the second as well as a budget work session? I, I didn't get a chance to compare it, but did we agree to do it on that?
Um, I believe that.
There's only one meeting that you all have.
But was it the first Tuesday?
Um, in, in the month of December, in order to avoid any conflicts with the Christmas holiday, regular meetings are on the first and third Tuesday instead of the second and the fourth. And that's adopted as part of our two thousand fourteen.
So there's also a meeting on the sixteenth, then?
There is a meeting on the sixteenth. It just doesn't have a budget function relating to it.
Okay, and the, and the meeting in, in, and remember, you gotta cut me some slack here. I'm new back into the lake here, literally in this case. On the, for the November meeting down at the lake, it's, that's on a Wednesday, not on a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's the days where we spend the weekend at the vehicle.
We?
Some of us. Well, also eleven, eleven, eleven.
The eleventh is off.
Yeah, eleven, eleven, eleven on the Veterans Day.
Right.
All right, yes, yeah.
So coming down into the, into February and March where there's, there's three dates that are on Thursdays. They're the only non-Tuesdays. The twenty-sixth is a budget work session, and then the twelfth is a work session, the twenty-sixth. I'm thinking out loud here. These are all work sessions. I, I would just have a, I'm gonna.
Some are actually public hearings, like the public hearing on the budget, the thirty-first.
No, he's talking about the Thursday meetings.
I'm talking about the Thursday meetings.
Yeah, they're just work sessions.
I, I just, I, I mean, it's not really, I probably would not be able to make those meetings at, at five o'clock.
We can, we, I was just dialing in to that. These number, these times are tentative. And so we can set them, we're under no requirement, five is the magic, magic start time. We could just let it slide to, to six or seven if you want.
Yeah, I would prefer seven o'clock on those, on those three meetings.
If the boards are inclined, we can make that.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's fine.
And then the agenda now to reflect that.
So the twenty-sixth, the twelfth, and the twenty-sixth again.
Now the question would go, how about the one on the twelfth of November?
Well, it's.
That's already been said.
Yeah, I've just got to, yeah, I'll just have to deal with that, because that's a regular meeting. It's been said. But the work sessions were, I figured they, there'd be flexibility there.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
All right.
Allison just pointed out, I mean, March twenty-sixth is a, a process note for, milestone for us. It's not a meeting. That's when we, we said, submit the ad to the paper. It's published the second time. So.
Twenty-sixth is not a meeting?
It's just highlighted.
Right, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, and that was, that's just a highlighting.
Okay.
So no, no meeting on the twenty-sixth?
That's correct. Nineteenth and twenty-sixth are just ad dates for the, for the ad.
Okay, get it. Motion approved.
As amended?
As amended.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
I noticed that all the Board of Building Code Appeals wish to be reappointed, so is there any reason why we would not go ahead and do that?
I don't see why not. You also have all the, oh.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec Board.
And they're all December.
I, yeah, they don't have a note that they wish to be, so I didn't know if they wish to be reappointed or not.
Yeah, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Maybe they ran out of yellow and colored.
I, it's not, on my sheet, it doesn't have that.
They, they all do wish to.
All the ones that were highlighted.
Well, they're not highlighted.
That's what I said, they ran out of yellow and colored.
That was, that was a revised, it was a revised version.
Yeah, there was a, Mr. Johnson, there's a revised package of information that came out on Friday, and that was a.
That I just got a few minutes ago.
It sounds like it.
Sounds like it.
The one on the screen.
We had sent it out via email.
Can we take a stance also on the skyline cap, since there's a little note in there? I'm not so inclined to appoint somebody to that position.
You mean, you're not so inclined to appoint a board member to that? I, I didn't either. I think we need to have somebody. We need to find somebody, not necessarily a board member, unless you're anxious to take something like that on.
What, 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 what does that involve again?
Last time I figured, I don't.
It's a community action program. It's a human services agency that provides services. Housing is generally there, and maybe financial management, so.
So if we were looking for someone to go on there, would we be looking for any particular sort of skill set?
Uh, human services, social services type, type person, you know, dealing with low-modern income households and individuals, particularly around housing issues.
I've got one person I'm trying to convince that, that, uh, try to take that, but if you forgot somebody.
No, no, I, I, I'm, I'm just asking. Well, I would move that we, we reappoint the, the three Building Code and the three Parks and Rec.
Second, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Tell them they're reappointed. Do we have any other appointments that are not highlighted? Not yet.
Not yet.
Me neither, so, okay. Uh, discussion items. GWAP.
Germana Wilderness Area.
Or at least it says GWAP.
I'll, and I'll certainly turn to, to Mr. White and Mr. Frame. We're moving through sprightly, I guess is a, is a good way of characterizing it, through our reviews. Generally speaking, SubArea Three is done. That involves Fort Germana, the Germana Historical Foundation, as well as, uh, Germana Community College. We had a meeting with Dr. Sam here Friday. I'll let him speak to, to the substance of that. So we feel pretty good about SubArea Three. SubArea Five was the Lake of the Woods. We had some minor adjustments to that, and I think that one is pretty well done. And SubArea Four, which is the largest undeveloped tract there north of Route Three, bounded by Wilderness Run and Raptan River, and Wilderness Shore subdivision is the largest and has the highest potential for economic development. We are working our way. We had a very lively meeting yesterday on, on concepts, and I think we're, we're, we're getting it refined. Our next SubArea will be Wilderness Battlefield. And the friends of the Wilderness Battlefield certainly can report are engaged, and I think are excited about the opportunities that this planning process will, will have for, for the future of that, that, that asset here in the county. That then would leave six and seven as the western subareas that are more on the, on the back end of the, of our time horizon. So we're moving through. I think we're still on a, on a timeline of, of, of having a working draft by end of the month, end of October, or middle of October, something about that time.
We've got a lot of the work done on what we're planning for Area Four. But before we go very far with that, we need to talk to all of the landowners on that, and, and so, yeah, we're still seeking public comment on these things, but I think before we advertise that one too much, we need to make sure the landowners have seen it first. And just to clarify, when Brian says we're, we're finished, he's referring to the steering committee's work.
Thank you.
Steering committee has brought it to the point where they're ready to have other organizations and individuals take a look at it and, and, and sort of set the stage for the more public part of the process. We're not, we're not saying they're complete in terms of, you know, it's, it's a done deal, but. And the steering committee, once, once they get public input and refined based on that, then it starts through the formal public process by the commission. I would encourage you, and, and the public for that matter, as you have time to look at this, if you, if you'll pick the, the map pages, the one that, that talks about future land use maps. I mean, for example, that's what one looks like. And maybe, you know, put those out on a table or something and just focus on those, because the, to use Brian's term, that the, that map, particularly that single page, is the plan in its, in its essence. And so that will tell the, not the whole story, but, but the, will give you a good sense of what's going on, so. I, I think it's, it's not too early to start looking at those, particularly as we finish eight probably at our next meeting, or, or not finish, but get eight to the point where it's ready to be discussed. Because then you will find that one, two, three, five, probably four, and then eight would be, would be informed to, to really get a good view of what the overall effort is, is yielding.
One other thing, and, and thank you, Mr. White, for clarifying. This is a working draft that we're trying to get assembled, that then is just the platform to engage further discussion, review, reflection, and comment. We did have a brief, and I want to, want to mention it since we're here in the meeting, that there will be a, a presentation in the Route Three or in the, in the Germana Wilderness Area, particularly at, at Lake of the Woods, or maybe at the, at the middle school, or at the college. Where we'll advertise it. We'll certainly have it, I think, channel, at Lake of the Woods, TV. Channel eighteen has covered our first Shrek meeting. We talked about maybe having, and the committee seemed to, to be comfortable with this. Instead of having kind of a formalized mic and, and comment, and people signing, sitting up in a, in a table, we may adopt a little more, a much more informal process where we would have a briefing of the plan for everybody that would come. But then we would have arranged in, in an array across the room these maps, maybe some of the text on some blown up, so everybody can see it in a big lifelike. And then comment cards. People can record, take a recording, we have a recorder available, to submit their comments in a much more informal process. It seems to, VDOT has used that pretty successfully in getting people. A little, it's pretty intimidating to come up to, to one of these situations and offer comments, so we wanted to, to get some, some good feedback. And so we're thinking about formatting it that way for this town hall briefing that we'll have out in, in the, in the area.
Good. All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, next then, we'll go to a cheerier thing, the state budget update.
I have good news. And then I have bad news. Depends on what you want. The good news is that I am hearing pretty well secondhand that the administration of Governor McAuliffe is going to not involve local, transfers to local government as part of the budget balancing for this fiscal year. That that is, I don't want to say is off the table, but that there are enough resources where schools in particular should not be, we should not feel, in a, in a indirect way, the impact of the state dealing with its shortfalls. I will also say that, that, that doesn't mean next year may be a different story. The numbers are significant, as I shared with you at the school board meeting, are significant. Uh, the numbers are significant, as I shared with you at the school board meeting, are significant. These are structural issues because of the Virginia's economy is changing, uh, primarily because of the, uh, federal government's, uh, spending, sequestration. And through the Department of Defense, as I've repeated and you've heard me say, per capita, we're second behind California on the federal dollars that ripple through Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads. As those dollars go away, so does income tax receipts, sales tax receipts, all the multipliers that go into Northern Virginia and, and Hampton Roads economy. And so that's why, uh, the state is feeling the crip. Uh, you've also heard me say that this was the first time that the, uh, that the state's workforce contracted, contracted without a national recession. The economists tell me that that is a significant thing. So, uh, all I, I want, not going to have this as a recurring budget, I mean, uh, uh, information item for you all going forward. If I do hear something, uh, depending on, on the urgency of it, you may get all points, uh, email from me, but otherwise, uh, I'll, I'll keep monitoring this. And then on Jan-, uh, December sixteenth is when, uh, the governor brings forward his budget, uh, his first proposed, this will be the first proposed budget from Governor McAuliffe to the Money Committee, the House Senate Finance Committee and the House Appropriations Committee. And we'll know what he's proposing for this year on how to solve the problem. And better yet, we'll see at least a predictor of what, uh, will happen in the following year, which will affect us. I'm pretty comfortable on, on, on putting that forward. To what degree, don't know. Uh, certainly the General Assembly is going to weigh on to those, those proposals. Um, the other thing that the governor, uh, has pulled together is into response from this restructuring that's going through is he's been paneling, uh, several of his secretaries, uh, Commerce and Trade, uh, Health, Transportation, uh, Information Technology, to come up with a four-year strategy that deals with workforce, uh, project-ready infrastructure, uh, the business climate, uh, innovation entrepreneurs and workforce development. And that they're coming up with a four-point strategic plan by December. Uh, I was invited to attend a, a, a focus group this Thursday, but because of my, my, you know, day job here and, and some of the things that I've got already on the calendar, I'm not going to be able to make it. But I, uh, there is going to be some opportunity for me to feed some feedback, uh, up to the Secretary of Commerce and Trade, Maurice Jones. So, uh, they are, uh, going to do it. I'll withhold, I guess, my opinion of what comes forward until I see what comes forward, uh, on it. But, uh, that's the state of affairs as best as I can report today.
Thank you. All right.
I guess.
You don't have to engage in painful things until the.
All righty, information items. Any questions on any of that? Anything for committee reports? Well, then we move on to calendar and look at scheduling a public hearing for Yates on October fourteenth. Does that work for everybody? Okay, sounds like that's good. Anything else before we go to closed? All right, well, if you'll do that, and then before we take off, remember gentlemen, the, the girls can't wait to come talk to us.
All righty. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following. One matter concerning discussion of personnel which concerns a specific employee in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where since consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body, and consultation with legal counsel, employee retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty seven, thirty seven eleven eight one and eight seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desire to authorize discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero.
Best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements? And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, roll call.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And Mr. Croacher?
Aye.
Well, I'd better get to go first. Okay, at this point in time, we have a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance for the designation of Lake of the Woods for the streets and roads. Um, Mr. Hutchinson, if you'd like to present?
I would. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Ladies. I'm Jim Hutchinson, Vice President, Lake of the Woods Association. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, uh, to let us explain our rationale for requesting, uh, the establishment of a ordinance that will allow our roads to be designated as highways for law enforcement purposes. Purpose of which will allow our, uh, special conservators of the peace to issue uniform traffic citations for reckless driving on Lake of the Woods. Uh, reckless driving defined for us is twenty miles per hour in excess of twenty miles per hour above the posted speed limit, which is twenty-five on most of the lake and fifteen miles per hour in smaller sections of residential areas. Uh, most of y'all know Lake of the Woods. We're a private gated community. Uh, we have about seven thousand to nine thousand residents, depending on the time of the year, uh, forty-two miles of roadway. We maintain our own roads and we contract our own security force through Allied Barton, which consists of about twenty officers, including the chief and eight, as of the end of this one, uh, special conservators of the peace. The lake traffic, uh, statistics, I don't have the latest ones from August. I have it from July. But we processed into the lake in the month of July in excess of two hundred and twelve thousand vehicles. So we have a significant traffic problem and we, we do our enforcement. Our security force is responsible for traffic enforcement. They do that in accordance with our governing documents, with the Allied Barton, uh, standard operating procedures and our post orders, which dictate in detail how the officers are to, to perform their duties. Now, our, our special conservators of the peace are law enforcement officers that attend the Commonwealth Criminal Justice Academy, which falls under the Department of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice, as well as the Virginia State Police. They receive their certification through that academy. Once that is done, they then are processed with background checks through the Orange County Sheriff's Office, and then are sworn in by the Circuit Court to perform their duties with the qualification that they are designated a specific geographical area. In our case, that's Lake of the Woods. Uh, on average, Lake of the Woods issues approximately fifteen hundred traffic citations annually. Out of that, approximately twenty of those citations or summons are for reckless driving. Uh, those summons are then processed in accordance with our governing documents and state law through our Legal and Compliance Committee, which adjudicates and assigns a fine. Out of those eight reckless, I, I will mention that we do have a number of repeat offenders. Now, the problem lies in our adjudication. We're limited by state law to a maximum fine of fifty dollars through the Virginia Property Owners Act. Uh, we are not allowed to assess points against an operator's license, nor are we allowed to influence or impact insurance rates for the operator. And this congru-, this is incongruent with what goes on within, uh, summons that are issued by local law enforcement and the state police. What we want to do frankly is put some teeth into enforcement. It's a safety issue. Our roads are used for recreation purposes, biking, jogging, hiking, et cetera, and it becomes a safety issue. As a result of, of this problem, uh, we treat it seriously. The Board of Directors at Lake of the Woods, uh, early this year approved the, uh, implementation of allowing our conservators of the peace to issue uniform traffic citations after we received coordination with the county attorney, our, uh, legal counsel, uh, the Circuit Court, the sheriff's office, as well as the Commonwealth attorney. The only stipulation that we received in that staffing concurrents effort was a requirement that the, uh, Board of Supervisors establish an ordinance designating Lake of the Woods roads as highways in accordance with, uh, Virginia Code forty-six dot, uh, one dash two hundred. As a result of that action, the Board of Directors at Lake of the Woods last month initiated the special resolution before you today requesting that designation of our roads as highways for law enforcement purposes. Uh, I will state that in our research, we have also found that Fluvana County has established a ordinance exactly the same as that we're asking for in support of the Lake Monticello HOA Homeowners Association, which is so similar to the Lake of the Woods, there's, there's not that many differences. One other issue that I'd like to address, and that is that Lake of the Woods is committed to doing its own traffic enforcement. We will not require the Orange County Sheriff's Office to do that traffic enforcement for us. We will do it with our own security force. So hopefully you'll, uh, approve our request, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I actually have one question. This is generated by residential requests, questions. The fact of, uh, wondering why the board adopted this without going through the community process.
The board, uh, did go through the process. We, uh, started this, as I stated earlier, uh, early this year in open session of the board. We have published not only our minutes, but we have, uh, published, uh, the actions and the results in our media from channel eighteen through the Lake Currents. Uh, it's interesting because as a result of the, uh, special resolution that we passed last month, there was a lot of articulated concerns among some of our, uh, our members. What we did, and I'll be glad to provide you a copy, is we published and disseminated a document of frequently asked questions with answers, which we staffed with our attorney, the county attorney, everybody, uh, so that we could inform the residents of, uh, uh, of our community about allaying their fears and concerns and also correcting, uh, a lot of misinformation that was floating around. And if, if, uh, with your permission, I would like to, uh, to read a couple of these so you get a feel for what they're doing here. About as sensitive as ours. One, if lower roads are designated as highways, does this mean that lower roads are open to the public? The answer is no. Lower roads remain private. We remain a gated community with private roads maintained to lowest standards, not VDOT. Two, lower must request county VDOT approval for unintended consequences related to the designation of our roads as highways. Uh, one of those is, uh, do we have to select or get permission to get parades, for example? The answer is no. Our lower radar lidar units calibrated for validated adjudication when summons are issued. The answer is yes. We have three radar units, one lidar unit. Uh, they are calibrated, uh, every six months. They are certified. Our scope, uh, in fact, all of our officers go through radar training, uh, sixteen hours plus observation and testing. That's recycled periodically, and those certifications are kept on file and open to anybody. Will issuance of uniform traffic citations by lower scope officers reduce lower revenues resulting from fines? The answer to that's yes. Uh, we recognize that we're going to lose, if we take the average, approximately a thousand dollars, uh, a year in quote-unquote revenues, which don't really compensate for the admin fees that we expend on them by prosecuting, uh, or adjudicating these issues in Circuit Court. But the revenue's not the issue here. Safety is the issue and putting teeth in our effort to stop, uh, reckless driving that, that's unsafe for our residents and community.
I have a question, uh, it sort of relates to, uh, Jim's question. Did your, uh, process for, uh, passing these resolutions include an opportunity for the public to comment on that?
That is, that is correct. At every board meeting, we have an open session where members can in fact comment. At our last session, uh, uh, in fact, I think Pam's here took advantage of that comment period, uh, in the August, uh, board meeting. Yes. Transparency is the key.
Jim, you have a profile. You, you mentioned that there were about twenty, on average, twenty of these reckless driving situations, uh, per year. Are those primarily residents, primarily visitors, primarily repeat offenders? Any way to?
Yes.
Sort of characterize that for us?
They are. Uh, in fact, they include also some unregistered tenants, tenants. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, that, uh, we had a serious repeat offender that had been going on for a couple of years, and we decided to go the civil route, take it to court. We won that case. It was a test case. We'd never done that before. He's currently a guest of, of the state because he didn't pay attention to what the judge told him to do either. So yes, we do have repeat offenders. Uh, the, the reckless driving, uh, violators vary everywhere from residents, non-residents, commercial vehicles, tenants, and as I indicated, uh, unregistered tenant, which we're getting handles on as well.
One of the things that, this, it's a fairly significant move, it seems to me, and, and, and probably justified, I will say, editorially. But, you know, to, to take this out of your local, uh, homeowners association and Board of Directors determinations and moving it to at least Traffic Court, I suppose. I'm not sure which court it would go to, but in most cases, probably Traffic Court. You know, have, what, what's your gauge of the community's reaction to that kind of change? I mean, it, it seems to me if the problem is serious enough, then serious action is required. Uh, i- is that your sense of the community in terms of?
I, uh, that's a good question. I, I have been a member of the community for over twenty-two years. And, uh, I started the Neighborhood Watch, uh, group on our lake almost four years ago and have been on the board for a little over a year now consistently, every year. The major complaint, and it's documented in our surveys that we, we send out to, to the members, security speeding is number one. I have a personal interest in that, uh, my daughter, along with my granddaughter and two friends, were riding their bikes along the road at the lake, had stopped, drank water, and a truck came up and hit her. Speeding. So we have people on our roads, even though we have walking trails and bike trails, et cetera, that use our main arteries for recreation purposes. And it has become more prevalent. We're just a mirror. We're just a mirror of the society. Health is a big issue now, so we have tons of people out jogging, running all the time, biking, et cetera. So is it a priority with our majority of our residents? Yes, it is, and has been for a long time. Our, because we're limited by Virginia State law, we're somewhat impotent in the penalty side. Fifty-dollar fine is like a slap on the hand when you deal with reckless driving and endangerment, and that's why we're doing this. This is gonna be the first time that we're able to put a deterrent in that means something through the court system with realistic penalties, and we believe that it'll also be a deterrent for the other speeding.
And you're gonna use the reckless driving definition of miles per hour?
Yes, sir.
You're not gonna have your officers try to make other determinations about it?
Our post-orders will specifically state, and it's been adopted by the Board for the community, that speeds in excess of twenty miles per hour, which meets the state requirement as well, will be considered as flagrant and reckless driving. That also applies to the fifteen mile an hour speed limits that we have in our smaller residential areas.
And that's the only UTC they will issue?
That's it. Uniform Traffic Citation will be the only citation that they will issue for reckless driving. I mean, we have other issues of trying to stop people passing buses when they let kids off and all that, and as far as I'm concerned personally, that's a super flagrant violation. But in this case right now, we're only dealing with reckless driving.
On what occasions does the sheriff come into the lake? I mean, I think for, you know, DWIs and maybe collisions or other kind of things, but are there...
There are law enforcement...
Oh, are you? Okay, all right. Jim was hiding you, so I couldn't read your face.
I can't hide him, but I, and I hope Mark will concur, our working relationship with the Sheriff's Office...
Well, that's really the essence of my question.
Is unbelievably good. We have, through Allied Barton, they've been on board now for a year plus, have a security chief that is almost eighteen years' experience, and he's super. We will detain people when there's law violations. Sheriff's Office will show up, do their thing. The calls, the communication that goes on between the two activities, between the Sheriff's Office and our security is constant. If a member calls in through dispatch or nine-one-one or the non-emergency number, they will notify directly our folks. There's a time issue sometimes based on the dispersment of the Sheriff's Officers on their time to get there, so they will ask our folks to respond. And again, if needed, we will detain, but they're working very close together. Would you all like copies of the resolution from Fluvana?
They're in the...
They have it. Do you have our frequently asked questions? Because there's more than one I just read. If you wish, I'll provide them, and you can use them at your discretion. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, then, we should open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we have three people signed up to speak tonight. The first is Pam Erber, resident of Lake of the Woods.
My biggest concern is not this issue as much as members not being informed of this before it came to the point of bringing this resolution to you for your consideration of this designation. The, what was published in our Lake Currents newsletter were minutes of board meetings, and simply in those minutes of board meetings, it said motion, you know, proposed, motion passed, item up for further discussion. It didn't give us any specifics in the meeting minutes of what they were actually trying to do. The Lake Currents issue that was published a little over two weeks ago mentioned this hearing, and that's when most of us who even know about it now, and I assure you, the majority of Lake of the Woods members do not even know about it. It was mentioned in that issue, and that's when we became aware of it, and despite that, I mean, we've put together some information, but two weeks is hardly long enough to do a good job of researching this and what the ramifications of this designation could be to Lake of the Woods. By accepting this designation, it opens up our gates to Orange County Sheriff being able to come in and write for any traffic violation in Lake of the Woods. It also opens us up to patrol by Orange County Sheriff, whereas right now, as a private community with private roads, they can only come in for reckless driving and DUI and all other things they have to be, traffic things, they would have to be invited in. If we go with this designation, we take that right away. And personally, I purchased my house in a private gated community, and as a real estate broker, I understand that this could devalue my property if it becomes a less private community. The other concern is that the information that has been provided by Lake of the Woods to the members is very misleading. In the question and answer thing that Jim just spoke of, and he did provide you guys copies if you'd like it, under item two, it says that designation of the highways has no impact whatsoever on their characteristic as a private street. But as I just said, the sheriff can come in once this highway designation is put through, and he can take it for anything. He can set up DUI checkpoints inside Lake of the Woods, and there's nothing that Lake of the Woods Association will be able to do about that. And Lake of the Woods Association and the Board of Directors specifically are telling us that they're only going to take it for twenty miles per hour over the speed limit. Once again, that's not true. Scope officers are empowered with writing tickets for reckless driving. Reckless driving isn't just speeding twenty miles over the speed limit. There are fourteen different offenses under reckless driving, and they can carry as many as six points on your driving record. They can also do jail time for reckless driving. It is the same penalty as DUI. It's very serious. As Jim's mentioned earlier, we've only taken one person to court, and we won. And we even recovered our court costs for doing that. That seems to me like that's a good thing. Why can't we do that again if these habitual offenders don't stop misusing our streets? Also, as a privately gated community, we can assess fines against homeowners for any number of things. Why can't we have an endangerment to the public for these habitual offenders as an assessed fine, in addition to that fifty dollars that we are capped at for the speeding? The scope officers, although I think they are very, they're very good at their job, I'm not saying that, but in order to become a scope officer, there are twenty-four hours of required training, twenty-four hours. As a real estate professional, I had to go to six weeks of school. I have to do forty hours every two years, and they have to do like four hours, I think it is, for recertification every couple of years. They're just not at the level of a law enforcement officer. The other confusing thing to me is, in their Q and A, they say that, can the scope officers give tickets in Lake of the Woods now? And they answered yes. So then, why are we here? Why are we having to designate our roads as highways when they can already write tickets for reckless driving inside Lake of the Woods? And as scope officers, they've been empowered to write the DUI tickets too. Now, whether they do or not in Lake of the Woods, I don't know. We, it's been stated that we do not have the proper equipment for them to be able to do a DUI inside Lake of the Woods. I just, I just feel that this is the wrong way to go. I think that it can still be handled in-house. I think we've done a very good job of handling it in-house. The general manager put out an article in our Lake Currents after the court decided in our favor on that one civil court, case that we did take to court of the habitual speeder. And I just don't understand why we can't continue to do that the way that we have been There was one other thing. Oh, as a special conservator of the peace, this is what's stated in the statutes. If any special conservator of the peace is the employee, agent, servant, or of another, his appointment as special conservator of the peace shall not relieve his employer, principal, or master from civil liability to another arising out of any wrongful action or conduct committed by special conservator of the peace while within the scope of his employment. That means if they make a mistake, Lake of the Woods has opened itself up to litigation. I just think it's just too big a risk, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Mark Amos.
I was gonna go last, but I can't go now. Let me just...
I'll go last, Mark.
Okay. First of all, thank y'all for letting me speak, but Jim is correct in the relationship that we have with Lake of the Woods. Been twenty-seven years of being here at Lake of the Woods, we work better with Lake of the Woods now and Lake of the Woods Security than we ever have. They have hired a very, very good company that is doing their security. With that being said, I would kinda like to speak on how all this evolved from my perspective. I got a letter from the association stating that that's, this is what they wanted to do, and first glance of it, I had no issues with it, but then when I heard that they were, the roads were going to become public for them to be able to enforce things, that's when the concern came to me. I saw Mr. David and Tom kinda in passing up at Mr. David's office, and we discussed this briefly. This was prior to it being, it was supposed to have been put on the agenda earlier, a month or so ago. We talked, and I think it was put off till tonight, and then the next morning, I believe it was the next morning, soon thereafter, several officials from Lake of the Woods, myself, Lee Frame, we met. We discussed this to see how we could get around the, some of the issues that I feel, and I'll get to those in just a second. We came up with, at the time, we came up with a somewhat of an agreement, I will say an agreement, in the type of the resolution that was to be written, basically saying that it would not require me to enforce laws, traffic laws, within Lake of the Woods. And I was happy with that, because my concerns are that if these roads are made public, that it will fall on me, even though Lake of the Woods says that they will, and I trust them, that they will do that. But that doesn't eliminate a citizen calling up, who is not happy with the security company and saying, all right, Sheriff, I got speeders coming by my house. I want you to take care of it. I feel like I'm obligated to do that, even though the resolution would say I'm not required to do it. I think as my duty, I think I am required to do it. In a perfect world, I don't think we're gonna have a problem, because the company that they have, I think, will do a very good job of it. But who's to say, three, four, whenever the contract runs out, that they go away from this company and we get a company like we had before? If we had a company like we had before, there is no way in the world that I would ever even think about it. I've lost my train of thought now, and I had a couple more things that I wanna make you aware of, and I'm trying to remember what they were. Oh, the changing in the Board, Board of Directors. If the Board decides they don't wanna do it, several years down the road, these roads are already made public. I don't know if you can take them back from being public or not. That's a, that's a question for you. I'm here to basically tell you my concerns. What you decide, you decide. I will mention something that, and I forgot your name, but she mentioned something about we can't patrol in there. We do actually patrol in there. We patrol in there for criminal reasons. We can't enforce traffic in there. She's correct on that, other than DUI and reckless driving. She did bring up a very good point, that it does open it up for us to come in there, and if we see a violation while we are in there, because my guys are in there all the time, either patrolling or serving papers, but if there is a violation, we would enforce it. But it also, which I didn't even, it never even crossed my mind until one of my deputies mentioned something to me about five o'clock today, was that it also opens it up for state police. State police can go in there, and they can write tickets and hold check and details, like she said. And like I said, it hadn't even crossed my mind, the state police said. The concern that I have is if any of those things happen, and it falls back completely on me, then manpower-wise, it's gonna be tough. So again, I think in a perfect world, you have a good company that can do this, but I just want you all to know what's, what the ramifications could be if it doesn't work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
The last speaker is Doug Rogers.
Good evening, guys. Welcome back, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here to support the resolution for Lake of the Woods as highways for speed enforcement and safety. I was on the Board about ten years ago, and we've had three different security companies since I was on the Board. The number one issue, speeding. It is still speeding. This is a safety issue. We tried to change the Property Owners Act. We submitted a bill. It didn't get through the General Assembly, because the Property Owners Act affects every HOA in the state of Virginia, not the Lake of the Woods. This is a Lake of the Woods solution to a serious safety problem. The resolution before you helps address this problem, providing increased safety for our citizens. Y'all have been on the roads. We have walkers. We have bicyclers. We have women with baby carts on the side of the road pushing carts. There has been much confusion and misinformation circulating within the lake. The Board of Directors started talking about this issue in April and talked about it at every board meeting since April. It has been published in our bi-weekly newspaper that's mailed to every property owner every two weeks. It has been on Channel eighteen, our local. Just like y'all, the public doesn't always read what y'all do or read your minutes, and you don't get attendance either and people paying attention. We have the same problem. The information has been provided if they choose to read, listen, or participate. It's not new news. It's old news. This resolution has the approval of the Lake of the Woods lawyer, the county lawyer, and the Commonwealth Attorney. Diane Wheeler is the one that suggested the highway. I recommend that this be approved, because it is the best thing to do for the safety of our people in the lake. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment real quick? Brian?
Let me find it.
The only other thing that I would mention, if this passes, is that...
The only other thing that I would mention, um, if this passes, is that if um, for other subdivisions, there needs to be some stipulations, we actually discussed it in our meeting, that um, uh, they would have to be required if they have a security company or with special conservators of the peace to be able to, to do this.
Okay. No further speakers. Public hearing is closed. Thoughts, gentlemen?
Well, why don't I, I would like to make a motion to approve this ordinance change, designating roads in Lake of the Woods as highways. Make the motion and get it open for discussion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second it for discussion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
I might mention that uh, we rarely get unanimous votes in Lake of the Woods. And both the resolution for issuing citations for twenty miles an hour above the speed limits and the resolution for asking for uh, for designation as a highway, both were passed with resolutions. Uh, both resolutions were passed with unanimous votes. So uh, uh, and given the fact that each of these uh, do come before the board uh, with opportunities for public input. And uh, even with the people who come and, and have, had had their concerns, most of them, uh, they still came up with a unanimous vote. So I think that indicates the, the tone of the, of the community in, in Lake of the Woods. I would, uh, I can understand Mark's concerns. Uh, I think that uh, uh, the fact that his people might be in there and find a violation that they, they would find themselves in the business of enforcing, uh, that's, that can happen. Uh, but in, in no way are we seeking uh, his uh, his uh, patrolling of, of Lake of the Woods. I mean, he's there for a variety of reasons.
I guess I have a couple of questions. One, you know, doing this designation as highways, is that the, the only or the best approach? And, and if so, if it, if it is the best approach, uh, does there need to be some other agreement, shall we say, between at least the sheriff's office and maybe the Lake of the Woods Board of Directors? Or some other uh, fairly formal uh, stipulation as to what one party will do or not do and, and these kinda things? I mean, I'm a, I'm a little concerned uh, about mission group, as we've talked about on this board many times. But I'm also concerned about uh, some uncertainty uh, when it comes particularly to, to the sheriff's office, maybe even the state police as well. And I think that, that there, there might be a way to deal with that uh, through a memorandum of understanding, if no better uh, kinda thing, such that uh, there's, there's a little bit more clarity as to who's gonna do what when. I understa- I, I appreciate the problem and certainly agree that it's a serious safety issue that needs to be dealt with. Uh, as to whether this is the, the best or the only way of doing it, I don't, I don't really know, but uh, I, I, I think there's uh, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the points that Mark raised, creating uh, a situation of unintended consequences that probably can be dealt with uh, for the most part, but uh,
We did, it is in the resolution, in our resolution. Uh, it was in the, it was in the uh, Board of Directors, Lake of the Woods Board of Directors, resolutions not asking for enforcement. And in our resolution intends to have set traffic laws and regulations enforcement by special conservators of the peace. So making it clear that uh, that's the county's position on that.
I, I see both sides of this, and I see both sides very clearly. Um, I own property in the lake for seventeen years. Lived in there the majority of that time. Traffic issues, there is no question, from, from the day that I went in there, uh, this is a definite problem. I also can look at it from the side of being a resident there and right, wrong, or indifferent, having the luxury of not having the sheriff's office or the state police in there to enforce the traffic laws is something that I know I was very accustomed to and many people in there are. I believe that as far as the sheriff's office goes, can be fairly well regulated over the long run. As far as the state police goes, I think it depends a whole lot on who the first sergeant on a shift is as to whether his officers decide to drive on past or they go in there. Uh, you get the young state troopers who are real go-getters, they're doing their job, but they see a way to get a lot of tickets. I, I have major concerns with it for those reasons. The safety issues, I one hundred percent agree with, that um, something needs to be done. Uh, and I have received concern from some of the residents. So, I'm very, very torn on this for those reasons. And I fully understand the concerns because as was mentioned, we advertise everything and usually we're talking to two reporters. And that's the extent of it, uh, when we'd like input, so I understand that. But I, I definitely have concerns regarding needing a memorandum of understanding between both within the county as well as the state police.
I guess I would ask the county attorney, I, I assume that your research has, has contributed to getting us to this point. I mean, you're, 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 you feel this is an appropriate way to go about addressing the issue?
I believe it's the only way to go about it.
Okay.
Man, it, it's kinda quirky, it's, it's literally in the definition. Forty-six point two one hundred following is the traffic laws. And in the definitions in the traffic laws, the definition of highway, and it tells you what a highway is. And it says the entire width between the boundary lines of private roads that have been specifically designated highways by ordinance adopted by the governing body. And that is literally the entire reference to the whole code to this. Is the ordinance pulls this road into the definition of a highway. That's the only reference.
Yeah, okay.
I, I listened to Jim on this business of having the state police or the, or the sheriff in there uh, controlling. Uh, my experience in talking to the constituents who have been bugging me for seven years, uh, I'm more concerned about Mark's issue of them uh, asking for him, for him to be in there more. I don't think anybody there is, is worried that we've got too much police enforcement inside the lake. That's not the sense I got. Uh, and so I would be more concerned about uh, Mark's issue there as opposed to uh, people thinking, you know, because uh, they want him to have his own, uh, his own office down there and uh, probably half a dozen other things, so.
Well, I guess that,
They like the sheriff.
That was one of my concerns about, and, and MOU is probably not the right way to do it, but at, at least uh, a, a public awareness, a fairly aggressive public awareness campaign, I think, needs to take place such that the, the residents understand that, you know, this is not a situation where they, if they have an issue or a beef of some kind, they can just pick up the phone and call the sheriff now, uh, and get some kind of, of attention. I mean, that's not the way this is gonna work.
I would imagine that at the, at some point, the, the sheriff can just refer him to the uh, to the uh, Lake of the Woods security, uh, and uh, and if Lake of the Woods security isn't, uh, isn't up to the task, then I would imagine that uh, the sheriff would feel an obligation.
Yeah, I guess I would ask the sheriff that question. I mean, if you get a call, what, what are you compelled to do, if anything?
Personally, I feel that if I get a call, I'm compelled to answer the call. Um, if we get a complaint of, like I stated before, if they're not happy with what security's doing, and they call me and say, look, I got a guy that's speeding in front of my house every day. I feel like I'm obligated to see if I can catch that guy speeding. No different than if I get a resident on thirty-three, calling stating the same thing. We're gonna try to catch that guy that's doing whatever he's being accused of doing.
Would you advise the security force at that, if you're getting that kind of a call?
Oh, absolutely, and I expect they probably would have been advised prior to me getting the call. Like I said, I have no intentions, if this passes, I have no intention of us going in, setting up uh, checking, checking details, going in there on routine to go, go and write tickets. Um, if we are in there and something happens, yes, we will probably be writing a ticket. But my, the concern, as I stated before, was if there is a complaint that is generated, that the citizen is not happy yet, I'm compelled to do it.
Well, the uh, in the resolution, the draft resolution, the suggestion from our attorney, uh, I assume you drew this out, correct?
I did.
Um, it says, whereas the Lake of the Woods Association does not require or intend for the Orange County Sheriff's Office to take over the patrol and enforcement of traffic laws within the Lake of the Woods subdivision, but intends to have set traffic laws and regulations enforcement by special conservators of the peace. That would be an acceptable paragraph if we were deciding whether to go on a date or not. But if we were, if we were deciding on whether to go on a date or not, that would be an acceptable paragraph. If we're deciding on getting married or not, then, then there's a whole lot of wiggle room in there. And I mean, this is, you know, this is not gonna affect people in District One to a great degree. Um, but I, I could see where there's, there's, there's kind of a, really a lot of gray area here. I mean, what if a, what if a future Lake of the Woods board decides that they run on a um, you know, they run on a, we're, we're taxed too much basis? And so they take over the Lake of the Woods board and they say, hey, we can save money by getting rid of the security force. We don't need the security force. The sheriff's department can do this.
Is this uh, resolution reversible?
Oh, let's know, don't, don't interrupt my, that's not too point, yeah, that's a good question, I got it written down here. Can the county rescind the designation?
Well, I, I had a conversation with the sheriff today, and one of the things that we discussed, and I do believe you could do, is adopt the ordinance with a self-expiring date. The general assembly does it all the time, where you say this ordinance just takes effect and expires, if not renewed by the board, expires on such and such a date, so you can actually take it for a trial run and, and see how it, it works, so. I, I wouldn't suggest, I mean, you could pass it and rescind it as well, or you could just make it self-terminating unless you take affirmative action to continue it.
But you feel like it could be rescinded at some future?
Yeah, it's just an ordinance, you could rescind the ordinance in the same way that you adopt the ordinance.
Well, yeah, but we're adopting these, these highways as, as, as public highways, so we can unpublic them?
Well, because, what, and what the definition says, I'm going by the state definition, it says, designated as highways by ordinance. If you rescind the ordinance, then they're no longer designated as highways. And that's literally the only language in the state code about this, so if you rescind the ordinance, then you're undesignating them.
Well, again, I, I think, I, this is one of those tough ones, cause I don't, I don't have a, like a philosophical position on this. But I don't think it's quite as cut and dried as, as, I mean, and I understand where, like, which, they got a problem, they're trying to address the problem. And, and I, and I, I understand they're doing that in good faith and they're trying to figure out how to make it happen. I, but I, I think if this board decides to pass it, we at least ought to pass it with the realization that it's a little bit more complicated than that. And that we are possibly letting the sheriff's department in for uh, some extra work.
I, I, I can see this, if the sheriff comes back and says, I need three more deputies. Uh, I gotta look at my budget or this ordinance.
Can we have a special tax though? To fund those three new deputies?
We could have an MOU with Lake of the Woods to fund this.
Well, and, and I, you know, Jim mentioned a memorandum of understanding, and I think that's actually a good idea.
Well, one of the things I was wondering is, and maybe there's a timing issue, so this is not workable, but, but if you have a situation now that is so egregious that it warrants a reckless driving citation, can you not call the sheriff, detain the person, have the sheriff's deputy come and, and issue the, I mean, or is it, the timing just doesn't work?
For the sheriff to do the citation, his officers would have to observe that violation and be involved in it. And you can't have somebody else come in and say, I saw this, and then issue a citation. Basically, you would have to go to the magistrate and swear out a warrant. Right.
That's what I was going to ask, is, could the officers from the lake go to the magistrate and swear out a warrant?
They could.
From Jim's standpoint, they can doubt without this.
Right, it, I just um, just asking questions, I'm,
We're willing to address the uh, additional commitments in writing if necessary.
There's a need, there, there is no if, ands, or buts about it, there is a need. I, I, I one hundred percent agree with that. But sitting up here, it's like the county going to the state and asking the state to do something for us, beyond what they're willing to normally do. There's, there's a whole lot of issues that have been brought up that we really need to filter through, I believe. I, I believe it's something that we could get to the point and, and pass if we get through all these additional issues.
What are, what, what would we need to do before we, before we could pass?
I'd be very honest with you. Uh, the state police, I, I guarantee you that there are some shifts out there that are drooling at the chops to go down there and set up a DUI checkpoint, which I don't care, but is that,
I can't imagine, I can't imagine that the residents of LOW would, uh, would be concerned about that.
Well,
I don't know, I heard, I heard some, I heard some concerns.
That's what I just heard, and that's the point I'll make. Is that whether it's a private road or a public road, that doesn't give you the right to ride around drunk with people hanging around the side of the road. And that, and that's what I heard. You know, I'm sorry, but if the speed limit's twenty-five, and I've been on those roads, and, and damn it, anything over twenty-five is ridiculous because they're too small. But to think that it's a private road, it's my right to speed, it's my right to drink and not worry about the cops? Hell no, that's the wrong attitude. If you get behind the wheel of an automobile, you be- you behave in private areas the same as you do in public. And, and yes, if you get called in to enforce it, I think you should enforce it. Whether we have to hire three new people, yeah, they won't talk about it. I would, I would look at it with an expiration, because I agree, maybe we look at it and, and go with, let's look at it till end of fiscal year, if we don't like it, we'll redo it. But I, my, my point is, it's no different than if I go on property owner and I ride around like a fool drunk, you see me, you should come arrest me, although I'm on private property. That, that, you know, I, I'm, I'm at risk of hurting people.
Can I speak one more time? Is it appropriate?
Okay.
Um, two things. If it does pass, I, I do like the idea that Tom brought up, only year to year or whatever. Um, if that way if it doesn't work, we, or can you rescind it anytime? Do we need to set a date or can it be rescinded?
Well, if you can rescind it anytime, or if you don't wanna put that, or, you know, you, you can do it either way, you can rescind it anytime or make it self-rescinding unless you take affirmative action.
You more comfortable with a one year, with doing it the expiration of this fiscal year?
That, that, that would be good for me, that gives you a money change.
Probably a test period is, is reasonable.
I would change my uh, motion to uh,
Mark, Mark, have a second, I'm sorry.
And the other thing that I would like to mention when it comes to, and I forgot the actual wording you all were using when it comes to, my understanding is Lake of the Woods possibly paying for deputies, is that where I was?
I heard that, that offer was made.
Part of the most, you know. One in the most.
I would not like to see that, I'll tell you why. Um, because if any, any entity, any organization, any, anybody in this county pays for deputies, they're gonna expect more out of this office, they're gonna expect a deputy to be in there driving every day, waiting on you.
No, no, I understand.
They're gonna expect the deputy not to leave Lake of the Woods and go to some separate edge. So, that's where I'm going with that.
Alright, thanks, Mark. I would modify my uh, my motion to uh, with a termination at the end of this current fiscal year. I'd make it next June.
Unless we take affirmative action to re.
Well, I mean, you say that, it expires, and if you don't take affirmative action, it just expires.
Just as a point of procedural clarification, in order to extend it or do it, you would go through another public hearing process as well as.
Would we need another public hearing to do that?
I would think you would need another public hearing because you're actually amending the ordinance at that point, yes.
So either rescinding or extending will require another.
I would, uh, if we need to go through a public, another public hearing process, I'd rather let, I'd rather just, uh. Let us, if we feel that we need to remove it, we can.
I, I don't, I don't personally think that, I mean, you're talking about eight, eight months or so, that's not really enough time. You'd evaluate it, I mean, I. I, I think if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, it would used to be a couple of years.
I, I think the people in Lake of the Woods will let you know within eight months whether it's working or not.
No, I don't know that.
Now, with only twenty, twenty violations a year, I'm not sure that in eight months we'll get a sense of it.
That's not true.
What is, what is your, what are you saying? Eight months is okay or not enough?
We're through, we're through the summer months, we're going into the winter months, people are in school. The snowbirds are going hither, thither. You've got, you've got to give it time to go through the whole cycle.
Need a couple of summers, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the Tweety Birds come out again in April, and the kids get out of school beginning of June, and we run till the end of June.
But if, I mean, I, I don't, we need to go through another public hearing process, if that's, that's the issue. We wanna go through another public hearing process, or we wanna take, go through a public hearing process, if we say it's not working, we gotta pull it.
Well, the, the, I, I would say we do not wanna go through another, another public hearing process. However, if this truly is a test case, we are, we're gonna wanna solicit input before we make the, the subsequent decision. And so maybe we in fact do wanna trigger a public hearing process, or at least create the opportunity. So I, maybe it's not so bad that we.
Right, if we weren't dealing with a self-governing organization. It typically does not want our assistance or request our assistance. I wouldn't have a problem with it, but we're, we're getting in a very. Interesting situation, I guess is the best word for it. It's, uh, and obviously, like you said, you took one thing as a test case to court. Well, I see this as a test case. And I, I'm concerned about safety. I truly am. And I, I would be willing to go for the fiscal year. And then extend.
What about the end of next year?
Or twelve months from now. I mean, a- anything along in there is probable.
Well, I, I went for, for in a fiscal year because it's a set marker that we can.
Which fiscal year?
Well, suppose a calendar year, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Four or five months isn't gonna make any difference.
Nine, nine months from now. That's nine months from now. And I, I agree, you know, at, at that point in time, let's get more input and see if it all works out.
Well, then, I, I'm just saying, we're gonna have another, we gotta have another public hearing in nine months.
Well, well, but.
Was, was it that painful?
Well, we have to have another public hearing in, in, in probably like, uh, what, May?
And that's the problem is you're gonna, you, you need to, you wanna have the public hearing.
It's gonna have to be back, you know, back before the, the current one ends.
Yeah, aft- after, after the summer.
So we need, yeah, so we need, uh.
You would adopt the ordinance effective on July first if you were extending it, so. Public hearing would have to coincide with one of your regular meetings, I think even the second meeting in June, you could do that. Or you could back it up to whatever.
Then you don't have the summer worth, I, I mean, I think you need to, you need to leap ahead another.
Six months.
At least.
What about, what about the end of next year? What about?
End of next year.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
That's fifteen months.
Alright.
That's probably the break.
Okay.
I can live with that.
I would make the motion then to, uh, put this with a termination clause at the end of, uh, two thousand fifty, calendar year two thousand fifteen. The second to go along with that?
I'll second that.
Alright.
Okay, we have a motion to second.
Question?
What?
Question?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carius five zero.
Make the motion.
Move, yeah, use your gap.